Welcome to the Griffin Spalding County Board of Education Work Session 315, 2022. If you would please place all electronic communication devices on silent or vibrate, and I'll have Mr. Doss do our prayer, and I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Doss?
If you want to stand, we will pray.
Stand, please.
Our heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for this day, the opportunity to come and to be, information brought about our district. Lord, we pray, Father Lord, that you will continue to lead us and guide us and direct us in all the decision on what is best for our district. But I'm so grateful and thankful for all of our employees, the parents, our students. We ask a special blessing on them. We pray, Father Lord, that this time, we know that the time from winter break to spring break is, is the longest weeks there can be sometimes, and we ask, Father Lord, to allow that to, to go quickly, that the testing will go well. Lord, we thank you, and we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Doss. Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Woo! Thank you. On behalf of the board, and for those watching, I just wanted to say thank you as we were provided a lunch, brunch, dinner, dinner, whatever you want to call it, but it was-
Add wonderful to it.
Wonderful, yes. Ms. Ray, thank you to you and your team. Mr. Simmons, thank you. And for all of those in the audience that sent us a card, gave us a gift card, everyone up, that you see up here today have tons of thank you notes to write, so we just wanted to thank you for all the gifts and high praises for Board Appreciation Week. So on, on behalf of the board, I thank all of you. Thank you. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Before we adopt it, Madam Chair, could we add upon the presentations and discussion, item six, personnel separation and retention numbers for 2021, 2022 by Ms. Julie Battle?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, five oh. Thank you. All right, number six.
Madam Chair, do you want to move executive session to the end of the agenda? I've got one short thing that I need to talk to the board about in executive session regarding potential litigation?
I do. Or do I need to ask my board?
Do you want to keep it as is from the front, or are you asking for it to be moved to the end?
The back.
I was asking for the board's pleasure. It's fine with me to move it to the end.
Yes.
All right. So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda for executive session to the end of the meeting?
And I will second.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Consent agenda items, you see there?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept these consent agenda items.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you, five oh. And to presentations and discussions, we first have policy LEG, Mr. Adam Pugh. That sounds like a TV.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Simmons. The district is presenting the revision of policy LEG, Business and Labor Organizations, for the first reading. There were minor changes made to the policy. We updated my department. It was previously called School and Community Services. We updated that to the Communication Department. That was the only minor changes you can see on the screen illuminated in red at the top with change, and then corrected at the bottom. The district will post the revision of policy LEG, Business and Labor Organizations, on assembly to receive input from board members and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting following the 30-day period for second read and final board adoption. Those next steps will be the same for all subsequent policy reviews this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Pugh.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next, we have policy IHE. Dr. Tiffany Taylor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Dr. Taylor.
Good afternoon, Chair. At the Board of Education, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
He told me I just won the lottery.
Okay. All right. So good afternoon.
Thank you.
The district is presenting the revision of policy IHE. This is the policy for promotion and retention for first read. And so this policy is being revised to provide some clarity that students will only be retained one time between grades kindergarten and grade eight. Currently, as the policy reads, it indicates that students could be retained three times, one time at each grade band. So one time K-2, one time 3-5, and one time 6-8. And so in reviewing this particular policy, we know that the research indicates that there are compounding impacts to students if they are retained three times at an early age that would continue to stick with them throughout their high school tenure. And so at this time, we are proposing that this policy be placed on first read to be revised to state that students would only be retained one time between kindergarten and grades eight. And so in order to respond to student needs, what we will do is to continue the MTSS process to provide students appropriate interventions. Also, we would continue to provide summer school, extended learning opportunities. And for instance, this summer, students, if at the conclusion of summer school, if they are not meeting adequate progress, we will have a committee that will come together to determine if that student needs to be retained, placed, or if at that time they would be promoted.
Questions?
I have, it's a question, probably more of a statement, but just to get more clarity, Dr. Taylor. What is the research or guidance that informed the change of this policy from three times to just once between K through eight?
Right. And so multiple pieces of research. I can certainly provide some of that to you. At our last administrative meeting, I took principals through an exercise where we looked at some of that, that research, in particular, like Education Trust is one of the resource points that we looked at. And it just has a compounding impact, because if you think about a fifth grader, you know, at that, the age that is behind, by the time that student were to get, if they were retained in elementary school, then they were retained again at the sixth grade level, then that student could be 21. That could be, pretty much, there could be some social as well as physical differences that you see in students if they continue to be retained multiple times over the, the point of their career. And so we are not saying that students could not be looked at in terms of their achievement, but we would bring a committee together to see if they would need to be placed, or if there's other opportunities or other things that we would need to, to do to, to help that student.
And so, if I may, Madam Chair, to keep for clarity for questioning, Dr. Taylor, the committee would be made up of, would it be a district-wide committee, or would it be each school will have its individual committee?
Right. And so what we're looking at right now with summer school is that it would be a district summer school, and so you could possibly have teachers that teach the student in the summer that did not teach them throughout the year. So of course, we would have a representative from summer school, but there would be teachers that taught that student throughout the year. The parent also would be a part of that committee. You would have the administration as well that would come together. If that student received additional services such as special ed or ESOL, we would also have those people at the table as well.
All right. And I, I know when you first started presenting, you mentioned, you know, going through the MTSS process. And so it leads to my next question. You know, understanding that the guidance is coming from the state, but what measures are we going to put in place? What you began to, to talk about, just to, I guess, for the record, for one more time, what are some of those supports that are going to be put in place, being that we're not just socially promoting scholars?
Sure. And so with the MTSS process, we first start with the MAP assessment. You know, that's the first piece of data that we collect on a student. And so from the MAP assessment, we then provide students with a plan. And that plan includes the skills, skills deficit that that student may have. The next step would be to progress monitor that throughout the year. We know that once you get to the middle school, you have some different grades and different things that play into that. It could be attendance. There could be some factors of behavior. You know, that is the second side of the house. And what, what we would do in that placement committee or in those MTSS meetings throughout the year is determine if there is a factor outside of the academics that is causing the student to not make adequate progress. So in other words, is there a behavior issue that might impede reading? The student may have an attendance issue that is preventing them from being in the classroom to get instruction. And so when we sit down to look at the student as a whole child, sometimes we find that there are some other factors that impede upon them making progress. And so some of those interventions, currently, we would reach across the House to student support by way of behavior. We have Project Aware. We have students who are having behavior interventions to try to get that side, you know, moving and, and up to, up to par, so that they will have a better opportunity to meet academic progress.
And, and I can definitely speak to that, because I know I've been in contact with parents who have reached out and being proactive to say, hey, what, what am I doing wrong with this particular scholar? And what can the school system, the district, do to support me? And so I've had conversations with Dr. Sauce. We had a, a parent over at Cowan Road Middle School. A mother was just very concerned about the scholar and how we could provide support. And we were able to reach out to the two counselors there to provide those supports, the scholars checking in, and mom is very, very happy. Even it's been to where there's a high school parent that reached out, and the scholars need the same type of reinforcement, those positive things, to help them throughout the day. And so I know with that piece will be a great safety net and a great skill set for our staff to provide to our scholars. And so for, is it safe to say that a student could possibly retain that is not in the MTSS system?
Well, that is a first step, is that a student should not be retained if they are not receiving interventions by way of MTSS.
Okay.
And so the other thing that I want to bring up as well is that we know that many of our scholars need to be re-engaged with education during the pandemic, you know, or since the pandemic. And we just feel that the policy as it was written is not that safety net that we really want to be able to offer for our students, because we know that we are at a time, a critical time, where we're having to look at a wraparound support for students. And while there could be one factor or another that could impede academics, we don't want to go to retention as a first step. And so we feel that this policy will really allow us to adjust to some of the, the new behaviors and some of the new challenges that we have seen with our scholars as they are trying to re-engage back into school that may have an impact on, on academic achievement. So certainly, strengthening the MTSS process is a goal of ours to ensure more supports for our students on the academic side as well as the behavior side.
And as we continue to strengthen, you know, those type of supports, how many scholars do you think are percentage-wise, this was probably a fact?
In terms of the retention?
Correct.
We, we currently retain a small percentage of students.
You know what that percentage?
I'm going to say that it is definitely less than 5% of our, our students that we retain each year. And so I don't think that this policy has a, you know, it's, it's not that we're looking to, this is not written so that we can retain or not more or less students. That, that's not what that is about, but it is really getting more in line with what the research indicates about promotion and retention.
Research with promotion, okay. Madam Chair, that's it? That's all I have?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Dr. Taylor, could I, could I ask you concerning those that enter high school? I know once they enter, they're, they're given a, a signed a graduation year, and they work toward it, you know, course by course. But is there still an age-out, you know, criteria limitation?
Right. And so unless students are receiving special education services, there is. And I believe, is it 21?
21, still 21, okay.
Still 21?
That is correct. And is Mr. Kelly here? They get an additional, how much time if they're special ed? 20, 22, one more year if they are a student with disabilities.
Okay.
Okay?
And I'd like to say on behalf of Mr. Shepherd, this is about 50 years too late. He will retain a number of years, but I know he appreciates it.
Well, if there's anything we can do for him, if he needs a tier of support, we will be happy to provide that.
It was the worst six years of my life.
He was on the long-term program.
That's okay.
Dr. Taylor, I just, I know, I was having this conversation earlier with Mr. Holmes and Mr. Shepherd about knowing that children all over America, not just in Griffin Spalding, for two years were pretty much at home. As you talk to Ms. Jewell and Ms. Pruitt, what are we seeing now that we didn't see pre-COVID as far as, you know, the, the big, the big issues?
In terms of student, would that be towards behavior?
It could be academic, it could be behavior, it could be, you know, the whole piece of pie.
Right. And so I think engagement would be, you know, probably just kind of off the top of my head, what we're seeing. And what that looks like is re-engaging into structure. And so, you know, just imagine, you know, that, that's for us as well, if, you know, we were working from home, and you could work in your PJs and, you know, have frequent breaks. Students are adjusting to that. And teachers are adjusting to, you know, use of computer programs and, you know, the like, in terms of our molds of instruction. But it all kind of centers around engagement. Likewise, with behavior as well. I'm just having to retrain some of those behaviors that we expect to see with our students.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll get that research to you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments, board members? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to go on into just an update that was requested on the curriculum audit. And so we do know that the curriculum audit was, the, the report, the findings was presented to us in May of 2016 that was completed by Phi Delta Kappa. And so today, I intend to just communicate to you and remind you of what those recommendations were, and just kind of some of the progress that we have had. And this, really, the audit, it touched all of our goal areas. I'll point out, as we're looking at the new strategy map, that one thing that we do need to keep in mind with the curriculum audit is that we were in a, we were in the previous strategic plan at the time that this was written. And so we, while today I will go through and show you just our progress on some pieces, it is important for me to note that we will need to go back and realign to what our new strategic plan is. And then also, we just received our findings from the, the most recent Cognia visit. And so we do feel that there are some pieces in the recommendations that are sustainable and some things that we need to continue. But we will certainly have to go back and revisit the, the findings as a whole, the recommendations, to ensure that they are in line with our new strategic plan, and also the new recommendations that we did receive from Cognia. And so we know there were 10 recommendations that came out of the curriculum audit, and so listed here, I will just begin with the first three recommendations. Recommendation one involved board policies around curriculum management and control, and so that is complete. For recommendation two, this was around the table of organization in an effort to design and deliver quality curriculum and programming. And so what we find in that particular area is that five of the seven are complete. One is not started, and one is still in progress. For recommendation three?
Dr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm not comprehending what, what they are. Actually, I'm, I'm just reading a sound system. To provide a sound system, what, what exactly are they referring to when they, when they use that terminology, a sound system?
So for recommendation one is to review, revise, adopt, and implement board policies to provide a sound system of curriculum management and control. So this mainly spoke to our policy IC, the way that we developed our curriculum, how we managed it. So not just that we had a curriculum, but that in addition, addition to that, that we had a way to manage that, you know, to assess it, you know, how do we communicate to our teachers, how do we communicate to parents? And so under this particular recommendation, there are five indicators. And I can, I can get into each one of them if you would like. I certainly can.
I, I was just really trying to understand what they were trying to say about having a sound system.
And so I believe at the time, when you go back and look at the recommendation for this particular item, at the time, we were implementing the Georgia Performance Standards, GPS at that time. And we didn't have our own district scoping sequence. We didn't have curriculum maps. We didn't have anything, so to speak, of our own. And so if a teacher were to ask, you know, what, what do I teach? What's the curriculum? We would just reference the Georgia DOE. And so this recommendation is saying that we need a policy that would drive what in Griffin Spalding we teach, okay? What, how do we assess? And we have that, you know, that, that's RCD.
Right.
And we've talked about our continued revision and update of that curriculum is to, to get feedback from our teachers and to get feedback from our district to see what areas we need to improve upon. And you'll hear just a little bit of that in a minute when Dr. Greer comes up to give a TNL update.
Okay. Appreciate that, because I, I knew we had some things in place, you know, with RCD, and, and I was just trying to see where exactly they were going when they used that, that terminology.
Right. And so we're certainly better than we were. And so the process itself, the policies are complete, but we have to continue to review those and revise those to meet the changing needs. And standards change as, as different things change. We just have to go back and, and review and revise those.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
For, for me, I know a lot of times when we would, during the retreats, we would have a, not a strategy map, but I guess a more, more visual. So if recommendation one, I mean, recommendation three and recommendation two, I would like to see, it says five of the seven complete, I would like to see what the other seven things are that are complete.
And I have that document. As a matter of fact, I'll ask, I can get that to you. I have that document.
Okay. So, I mean, for the purposes of today, presenting it, I think for me, I'm more visual to see if five or seven steps are complete. Well, do they have anything to do with the other?
Yeah, you were just looking at it.
Okay. So let's do this.
And-
Dr. Taylor?
Go ahead.
I apologize, Mr. Doss. You, you go ahead. I'll circle back.
Well, I was just going to make the recommendation. I like the idea of, for today, hearing this, and then possibly at our next retreat, which is coming up, getting a little, the little more details that are, that are with that. For me, I was the one that asked to make sure that we just, I know we, this was when I first came on board, when this was done. And so it's important for me to see us complete this, because 17 years or 18 years prior to me coming on board, there was one done, and they didn't complete that. So that was my reasoning for that. And, but I am in complete agreement with Mr. Brown that having, seeing that, that visual helps us to know where we're at and where we're headed with that. So I don't know that we can necessarily have to do that today with everything else we have going.
Yeah. And like, and I know for me, it just helps me to see where we are, if that's the whole goal of what the presentation is about.
So Madam Chair, you've got a couple of options. I can get it pulled up. You can have it discussed now, and you can wait until the retreat.
Well, I would ask- At the board's pleasure, would you like to wait until the retreat, or would you like for us to continue today, based on what? And I, I agree with Mr. Brown and Mr. Doss, because it was, I'm a visual also. If I see it, I'll probably remember it.
And we have it. I just need, I don't have my email, so if you could get Harper to pull that up, we could transition, if that's what you would like.
If you're asking me, I'm great with the retreat. I'd love for it to be a little more polished and-
A little more polished, and we're not rushing, and we have time to actually review the information that is before us. We don't want to just, you know, shove it down our throats. And so if, I, I guess for the purposes of the presentation, I guess we can definitely let Dr. Taylor finish, being that we know that we're going to get a more in-depth dive at it at our retreat.
Okay.
Works for me.
Works.
Is that okay, board members? Is it good? Everybody good?
Okay. And so I think what we can just accomplish this afternoon and kind of get us ready for the retreat is I can at least just share with you just the status, as you see listed there under each recommendation. And then what I can do is gather any questions that you may have, and I'll make sure that I'm more concise our, our next time together. Okay? And so again, recommendation two, what you'll see here is that we have, it was seven steps to complete, and we have two of those that we are still working on. Recommendation three is about a comprehensive planning process. That involved the district strategic plan, the technology plan, and the facilities plan. That involved the district strategic plan, the technology plan, and the facilities plan. And what we see in those particular areas, that six of those seven are complete and that we have one in progress. And you see the two subcategories are technology and facilities, and so, we are working on policy that will update our technology plan. Okay, moving on to areas four through seven, and what you will see here is that, that recommendation four is still around the comprehensive curriculum management plan and that's the design, the delivery, and the monitoring and evaluation of the curriculum. And that is one that six of those six action steps are complete. And recommendation six is also complete. And recommendation six involves the monitoring of district instructional practices. And so, again, I'm, I'm providing you just an update on what we saw in the audit, but what we're going to have to do is still go back, because there are some Cognia findings that, that we recently had, that just shows that this is an ongoing process, that we still have to go back and ensure those practices are in place, okay? When we get to recommendation five, this one was around our student assessments and our program evaluation system. And so, we still have two areas in that regard that we're still in progress of. And recommendation seven, there's also two areas that we are in progress of and recommendation seven is the identification and elimination of disparities and inequalities affecting students' learning success in all schools. You will see when we share the Cognia report that there are some areas that were highlighted that, that still go along with that recommendation seven that we need to revisit. Okay, and finally, I have just this last slide. For recommendation eight, this is the district professional learning plan and so that is complete, along with recommendation ten being complete around program interventions. If I highlight just for a minute, recommendation ten, although this work was complete, what we saw in our Cognia report is that it is highlighting that oftentimes our schools speak of programs as a strategy. And so, we did respond to what this recommendation was by way of the curriculum audit, but we still need to revisit that, okay? And then finally, area nine, this is around performance-based budgeting in our allocation system. And so, there are two of those four areas that we're still working on to be able to ensure that we have a performance-based budgeting system. And so, that's just a high level. I will ensure that I, I receive, you know, your feedback and make sure that the next time that we're get together, we have an activity where we can go a little bit deeper into those. Are there any immediate questions?
When will we get the Cognia results? When do those come in? I can't remember. Okay, I missed that, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I don't have really much of a question, but more of a statement than one is thank you. Staying on top of this, like I said, is important to me. And just an example, just especially for those that may be viewing that don't, don't have an understanding that this organization came in and did a complete audit of our school system and made these ten recommendations that if we make these changes, that we would begin seeing some different results. And so, that's why I'm kind of pressing, pressing forward with that. And not that, for instance, on like number two, our previous superintendent made some changes to the table of organization and then our new superintendent came in and shifted some of those things, but it all stayed in alignment with what the curriculum audit said, which was important to me. And so, it's important that I think the community realizes, even though there's some changes that are happening, we're staying in line with what the professionals have said we need to do to make our system the best it can be.
And thank you for the ask, and I certainly will, will be better prepared for the next meeting for us to go deeper.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You was adequate, Dr. Taylor, we just exceptional.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Greer? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Number one, I said this earlier, I don't think we, any of us have officially met you and I wanted to say welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I got to speak with her just a few minutes before we ate our brunch, lunch, dinner, whatever you want to call it. We appreciate you being here today.
No problem, thank you at all. And to you, Madam Chair, good evening. Board members and Superintendent Simmons, tonight I will provide you with an update for the Teacher and Leader Effectiveness Division, the Department of Teaching and Learning. Of course, we have our non-negotiables and our focus areas, our mission and vision. And for today, my presentation will focus on two goal areas, student achievement and high-performing staff. For today, I will give you specific updates surrounding curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And I would like to start off with just focusing on our students' achievement. As we know, it sets the stage for ongoing initiatives in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. In particular, our achievement with our kindergarten, first grade, and second grade students with Orton Gillingham, also known as OG, is what I will highlight. Based on our students' assessment data for OG, it is evident that our students' reading skills are improving. If you take a look at our kindergarten data and the rate of proficiency in September grew from fifty-three percent pass rate to seventy-eight percent pass rate in February.
Great.
What this means, you there? You good? What this means is that in September, fifty-three percent of our students scored at the proficient level and that number grew to seventy-eight percent of our students scoring at the proficient level in February. That same type of growth is evidenced with our first grade students increasing from twenty-five percent at proficiency level in September to forty-eight percent proficiency level in February and our second grade students from fifty-three percent to fifty-eight percent. One area I would like to communicate as it relates to OG is that we, the Griffin Spalding County Schools, has been awarded a readiness and literacy grant in the amount of $200,000 from the Georgia Department of Education. We will use these funds to further support the implementation of OG to include providing decodable readers to all elementary schools as well as providing training for literacy for our classroom teachers at the elementary school level, as well as our parent professionals.
And so, Dr. Greer and Madam Chair, if I may?
Sure.
That's where most of my questions were going to come.
Okay.
As it relates to the support and the implementation. Roughly tell us how long is it going to take, the type of trainings that we're going to do? I know that we have a district person that handles OG, right?
Yes, we have a teacher on special assignment.
On special assignment that's handling it. And so, how often will they present to a body of teachers to, or will it be retraining stuff that they've already learned to kind of support and go forth? I just want to see how it works and then over that period of time, not necessarily a dollar amount, but what's going to be used in those different supports? So, under literacy, what is it going to be?
So, right now, just to speak to the professional learning part.
Okay.
Ms. Monet is our teacher on special assignment. She has been working with classroom teachers over the course of two years in OG. She is also supported by our ELA K-5 coordinator, as well as Ms. Jewel, to support principals of those levels. The training that will take place with this literacy grant will actually take place over the summer through next school year and it will include new teachers who will be teaching OG in the fall, as well as parent professionals who will support OG. So, this rollout is really to meet the needs of our new teachers, who will be completely new to the program, as well as providing support to those other people in the building that support OG, assistant principals, instructional coaches, and our principals, okay?
And I know this probably hasn't, it has nothing to do with it, but I just seen recently where I know one of the parent professionals in my district who teaches at Atkinson received the Grow Your Own. And so, I love the fact that we are continuing to add our classified staff, the parent professionals, so that they can get the training, especially those that have a itch or interest to be a classroom teacher. So, I just love the fact how we are really growing the people that support learning here in our district and not just for those certified teachers, but for our classified staff as well.
Absolutely.
We are really doing a great job.
Absolutely, and I think that, that individual in particularly would be a prime candidate for someone going through the OG training over the summer. You also asked about just maybe how we will use these funds. So, of course, we have our RCD curriculum right now and I'll speak more about the curriculum, but as a part of our curriculum, we have to embed decodable readers for K-2 for OG implementation, which is our phonics program. These funds will be used to help support the purchase of those decodable readers so that we can provide those texts to students when we implement the curriculum in the fall, okay?
All right, and so, the, what, walk me through what the summer implementation will look like.
OG has, of course, different modules and right now, we are still in the planning phases because we just received this memorandum of understanding, if you will, from the DOE. But just thinking about what has happened this particular school year, OG has also different segments that they teach the students, for instance, red words or another one would be like the multi-syllabic, being able to speak the multi-syllabic words and each day would focus on a different part of OG. Typically, that summer training would be about ten days. So, give or take, depending on the module, you may get two modules or two days per module.
Okay, and that would be for our professional learning. What would it look like for a scholar?
For the scholar right now, for K-2, they have approximately ninety minutes of instruction in ELA. Thirty minutes of that instruction is OG, which is the phonics instruction. Every day, they receive thirty minutes of phonics instruction for kindergarten, first, and second grade.
Okay, all right. And we talked about the specific supports, we talked about how it's going to be used and so on. All right, I'm good.
Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Congratulations on the grant, that's awesome.
Yes, awesome, thank you. As we continue, another area of curriculum that I would like to provide you an update on is our curriculum revisions process. Of course, the Department of Teaching and Learning used the curriculum feedback survey data as it related to RCD to outline the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three GCS curriculum revisions process. Going into the next school year, we will build the GCSS teaching and learning framework. The new framework, if you will, will allow for increased teacher flexibility and better alignment to the Georgia Standards of Excellence, both of which came out of that survey. The curriculum revisions process will include professional learning on developing learning targets for the core curriculum standards, as well as revisions to our current assessments. We have solicited assistance from all K-12 core teachers to assist with this process. The process will kick off later this month and at this time, we are still looking for curriculum team members because we would like at least one representative from every school to participate with this project. Moving on to the instructional updates. Of course, our GCSS teacher endorsement program is underway. The overall program is in place to strengthen teacher skills to support school improvement, enhance student growth, and impact teacher retention. For the upcoming school year, the district in conjunction with Griffin RISA will offer teacher endorsements in gifted education, online teaching, and dyslexia. We currently have over two-hundred-and-twenty-five teachers who are interested in participating in at least one of these endorsement programs. We are working this week as well to look at the applicants we have available and communicate with those applicants by March thirty-first if they will be able to participate in the program for the fall. The last update is in regards to assessments. In preparation for the Georgia Milestones Assessment, the Department of Teaching and Learning conducted a pilot of DRC Beacon at three schools to include Atkinson Elementary, Cowan Road Elementary, and Cowan Road Middle. DRC Beacon is an assessment system that includes practice tests released by the Georgia Department of Education for grades through three through eight in ELA and math. The purpose of the test is to acclimate students to the features of the GMAS as well as provide teachers with benchmark data that can be used to determine areas of acceleration and remediation. We, as a district, are also looking at this DRC Beacon pilot to determine how we can use it for the coming school year. As I mentioned, we are looking to glean benchmark data from them. We also want to be able to glean that type of data as we go into the next school year, as well as prepare the students for next year's milestones. My team right now is currently working with schools, teachers, and leaders to look at the data and to get their feedback about the implementation of DRC Beacon in the schools. That does conclude my presentation for tonight. Do we have any more questions?
I just have a comment, Dr. Greer. Number one, thank you. And I think everyone knows that I'm all about teacher flexibility, teacher creativity, and as long as I'm insured that our teachers will have that flexibility and be allowed to be creative, because in my opinion, teachers are the most creative people on earth. I'm all for it.
Thank you.
But the first hint of not having flexibility and not being allowed to use their creativity, I'm going to not be real comfortable up here, so I appreciate that and thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Because I think that's what we learned a year and a half ago, that it just, the way it was, it just wasn't working.
Right, and we are still gathering feedback. Even though we had the focus groups in the fall, we are still regularly collecting feedback from the teachers on the RCD curriculum so that when we transition to the next curriculum, it will meet the needs of everyone who has to use it.
Because I'm a firm believer, having been one of those in the trenches, that the people in the trenches can guide and direct us, so I thank you for that.
No problem, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, nice to see you.
You too.
All right, we have Ms. Battle with the employee separations and retention. Thank you, Ms. Battle.
Okay.
Did you just print from your phone? Is that how you did this? Did you just print this from your phone and it just showed up?
I had help.
We're going to do it, yeah.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, and Superintendent Simmons. Thank you for allowing me to share this information about employee separations and retention. Of course, we have our non-negotiables, our pace, be professional, accountable, and communicate effectively. We have our focus areas. We have our vision and mission while we do the work. And of course, we have our roadmap to success, working from the bottom all the way to the top for ultimate student achievement. I wanted to first talk to you about the separation process. And I don't know that people fully understand. When a certified employee requests a release from contract, it is a process. So, anytime after June of fifteenth, there are very limited circumstances under which we can allow a person to resign. And that would mean if someone is going to relocate with a spouse a hundred miles or more, it's a promotion, we put it to a test, is increase in responsibility, salary, and prestige. And then also, we deal with people now more frequently than before who are dealing with incapacitating illnesses, not just physical, right? So, we're seeing some other situations that are requiring people to leave mid-year. And then also, anytime someone is requesting release, we do ask them to at least give us a two weeks notice. So, I wanted you to understand that process for certified personnel. We communicate this every year in employee handbook and we follow the guidance of the Georgia Professional Standards Commission with our timelines and deadlines. It is somewhat different for a classified employee. A classified employee does have the opportunity to submit a letter of resignation to his or her immediate supervisor and of course, all of that makes its way through the... And of course, all of that makes its way through the superintendent's office, ultimately to be approved by our board. So I wanted to show you the difference in how a certified person could request a resignation and a non-certified person. Moving along, I wanted to give you information about our separations to date. And this goes back to July of 2021 through March of 2022. And we have a total of 113 separations. And let me tell you some of the reasons. It's resignation, retirement, termination, or sadly, death. So during this school year, 80% of those 113 individuals resigned. And it's different reasons, relocation, need to be medical, whatever that needs to look like. And then we had 12% of those separations due to retirement. Some people, once they hit that magic number, they're ready to go and retire. And then we had 7%, so we do have cases where people are terminated. It's not always a good fit. And we had less than 1%, we lost this school year due to death. So I wanted to give you a look at what those job categories look like. So going, looking at that 113, the largest number of separations that we've experienced is actually our paraprofessionals. And so it starts with our paraprofessionals, then followed closely by teachers. And then we had bus operators and transportation department members. And then our custodians, maintenance, and warehouse. You know, Mr. Ballard is very actively trying to recruit as well. And then we did lose four assistant principals, as well as four clerks, clerical positions. We did lose four nurses, and we took a hard hit with that. Two literacy coaches, as well as two building-level secretaries. One school counselor and a district administrator. One executive director, as well as one payroll specialist. So I wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of what those numbers look like. Those resignations are not all teachers, but we can see that our paraprofessionals, we're in great competition. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about some of the things we're doing to try and fix that. The next slide talks about projections. We will see additional separations before the end of this school year. And we right now have 67 employees with what I would identify as a future resignation date. Those are individuals who are gonna work until the end of this school year. But come May, they will be leaving our district for one of those reasons. And then it's not uncommon to see additional separations after we issue contracts and have contracts start to come back. And just for your information, we are on schedule to issue certified contracts for teachers, other positions, on March the 21st. And those contracts will be due back to us on April the 8th. I've included, and you can click on that link at your convenience, but it's a, it's a very well-written article, and that information is gonna come to us from the National Education Association, NEA. And they, oh, okay, there it is. All right, so I'm gonna just give you some highlights from that. Mr. Harper, if you want to scroll down, I'll tell you what that article speaks to. And they give us the reasons why people are leaving K-12, and they're calling it "The Great Resignation." I know if you watch CNN or read the news, you're hearing this phrase more frequently, "The Great Resignation." So the number, number one reason in K-12, educators cite burnout. They're tired, they're weary. Exhaustion is another reason, stress. And not only is it the stresses of daily life and work, they have the pandemic-related stress now to contend with. And then compensation, that was also a point of concern. And then the amount of paperwork, I know we hear that again and again. But those were the reasons, when you have time to read through that article, those were the reasons that people are saying that they're leaving K-12. I also included for your information a slide on the historical information for our separations. So if you look at that, and I found this very interesting. In 2018 and 2019, we had 298 separations. So almost 300 people left our district for various reasons. But in 19, 2019 and 2020, it was reduced to 115. And if you know, we went into a pandemic, March of 2020. So recruitment fears were canceled. People were taking a "I need to stay put" approach to their career choices because there was a lot of uncertainty. But now, as we're starting to ease out of the pandemic, we found ways to begin our recruitment efforts safely. If you look at 2021, we're up to 230. So if you look at where we are now, and the already 67 that we know with the future resignation dates, we're right at 180, but that doesn't include who won't turn their contract back in. So I'm telling you this to be aware that it is a topic of conversation, not just here, but it's a national crisis. I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we're doing in terms of retention. We want people to stay. So we talked about, and I looked at the top five categories to speak to. Paraprofessionals, that's the number one, we're losing parapros. And a lot of times, people are able to go work in a private industry and earn more hourly than they would in a role as a parapro, and have the ability to get paid, say, twice a month or every week, whatever that's going to look like. So what we've done internally, we have the grow our own collaboration with the high schools. We're identifying students that have a desire to go into the education field, and we're trying to tap into them and help them become certified parapros when they graduate high school. So that could be a way to get them started on their journey to ultimately becoming a teacher. And then also, the work we did with the Classified Salary Study. We're still bringing forward recommendations, but that may be a way that we can look at potential retention. Teachers, and we talk about our teacher induction, all of the support that the teachers get. We have a very good induction program, as well as our Grow Our Own $1,500 scholarship. And Mr. Brown spoke to that with the paraprofessional who is going now to become a certified teacher. And so we had 11 awards, 11 scholarships issued. So that's a very good retention and an incentive. And then also, we looked at our bus operators, our custodians, clerks, and nurses. So all of this will speak to that work that we bring forward to you with the recommendations for the salary study. I wanted to highlight some other retention strategies that we're using. We do have, we do engagement surveys. We use those responses to figure out how we can work smarter, make things better for employees. We offer the Employee Retention Stipend. We've been fortunate enough to offer that in years past. Also, the Employee Referral Stipend. That's not talked about as much as it should be, but that is also something that we have available. We have school retention plans. Each school has their own retention plan on how we're gonna retain employees. And then we also started what we call the State Interview. It's all right to get the exit interview information and try and get better, but by the time I'm sitting down with someone for the exit interview, they've made up their mind. So we want to focus our efforts to the state interviews. The people who are in our district have been here for many years. What makes Griffin great? So we're working on those state interviews to make things better. So I wanted to share that information with you, but I will take any questions that you have at this time.
I was curious about a stay interview. How, how often do you do stay interviews, and who do you decide to stay interview with?
We actually look at the longevity, how long they've been with the district. We don't have a set schedule. I know our engagement, we do that in December, and again in May. And our principals actually help with those state interviews.
So if I, if I know of an employee in a certain, in School A that would like to have a stay interview with HR, could that be possible?
Sure, if you could email me that information, we could follow up with that employee.
And then do we have any, you know, we hear long COVID. Do we have a lot of employees with long COVID symptoms and?
So, so that would fall under the FMLA. If it's, if it's to that point and they've been out excessively, then we're having those FMLA conversations.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Battle, thank you for moving on this. This is just up in my wheel well, recruitment and retention. You know, a lot of people are, haven't really kept up with the turnover in the school system over the years. But we are always, we have always been up in the 160 above as far as turnover every year. And I'm pleased to see that you have put forth the effort on your retention strategies, the shot that I, in the realm that I'm used to working in. You know, there were some financial incentives for recruitment, and especially retention and turnover. It seems like in the educational field, everyone, and I've said this to previous administrators, people are, people have just settled in that there's gonna be turnover in education. People are gonna go for the money. But if you look at the reason, surveys show financial is not the main reason. One of the top reasons is how people are treated and how they're talked to. That's the number one reason. So I'm glad you did this and did it in a fast manner because I, I think we talked about this maybe less than a month ago. And, but I do want to highlight for those who are not familiar with what's going on in this, in this study that has been done. 55% of teachers are leaving the profession because of this pandemic. It's nothing that Griffin Spalding County School System can do. These people are just burned out and stressed because of this pandemic. Not saying that we just gonna settle, but it is what it is. People are getting out of the profession, just like in healthcare. That, that's, that's my field of expertise. They're getting out of the profession. But I, I want people in Griffin Spalding County to know that these numbers are nothing new. You may, you may have a little uptick in these numbers because of this pandemic, but we've always been up 160-plus turnover every year. I know Ms. Cook can attest to seeing that. That's just what we're used, we're used to seeing. But some people, because of this pandemic, they're paying more attention to turnover, but it's nothing new. And I thank you for this. But I'm gonna ask that you do one thing for, for the board, not just for Zach Holmes, but between now and the end of the, the school year, if we can get a five-year, get the turnover numbers going back five years pre-pandemic through this school year, that will show people the numbers that we see every year as far as employees leaving and coming to our system. It is, it, it will speak for itself, the numbers, the numbers will speak for themselves. So that, I, I really thank you for this, very informative. But if we could get those numbers at the end of the school year, I think that would be a good piece to add to this, to show people that it, it just, it is the profession. And this pandemic is making it no better, no easier for us, as well as other school system across the nation. We're not the only one dealing with it.
Okay, will do.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Battle. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board. I wanted to say, just before I run through this financial report, tying what Mr. Holmes just said back to our budget last year. You know, we, you all approved the recruitment and retention specialists from Ms. Battle's office, which was a new position in our good, better, best scenario. So we are making attempts. I've really enjoyed working with Judy and her staff, and, and as they continue to grow, there's a lot of innovative things we are doing here. Again, I tell you every once in a while what I've seen in other places, and people probably don't realize that. There is a lot of good work going on. Sometimes it takes time for that to materialize, but I do see that. So I appreciate the question, or the comment. So this is our condensed version. Again, I told you last month that our ending balance would start going down. It didn't actually do that this month. We're still looking at about $38 million, but I'll tell you this. With us, I guess y'all realize I was just here at the last meeting. So we've converted, the superintendent told you we're gonna start doing this at the work session. So you'll get this report at the mid-month meeting, which is really more real-time data for you. That's good. The only risk of that is that sometimes monies aren't accrued quick enough. The revenue might not be in, et cetera, because we may not have gotten that information by the time we have to submit the report. So I'll keep, we'll play that little balancing act till we get used to it being on the middle of the month. So general fund reserve, as of February 28, $38.9 million. And I did highlight nutrition, which I didn't do that last month, just to show you, he's at 2.1 million right now. But again, that his revenue claims are normally due to the state 30 days after the end of the month. But we're working with his staff to get those submitted earlier. So he did get that in early enough for this report, so you got more revenue in, but maybe not the expense to balance it out. So that's why that shows a little higher than it would normally. On the second page, your general fund statement for the current month, we're about $3 million, 10.8 million in revenues, 7.3 in expense. I will tell you, I know for a fact this will go down next month because we did get the tax collection check-in right before I submitted this report. It's 1.3 million for the month. So your expense is gonna still be about six or seven million, so we'll start dropping when I come in here in the, in the mid-April meeting. So again, 68% revenue, that's about a percent higher than last year. The expenses are 53.8%, that's a percent lower than last year. So that, in your summary report on your big, big packet, it talks about that. So those are both trending, again, in the right direction. Page three, again, is your special revenue funds, which we split out some of the, some of the grants. And you can see the spending on cares, one, two, and three. Those in the current year are about 10.6 million right now on spending. Again, you can see Title I is your first column to the left, and just reading that left to right kind of gives you a snapshot of the grants. Page four is the nutrition monthly financial, 4.9 million for the year in revenues. So he's already at 80% of his budget, and Robert's over here smiling because we've been talking about this for his planning for next year.
I thought, I thought he had ran out, but I see him sitting there.
He, so, so again, the waiver program that we've got, and I think him and Mr. Akins will probably at some point bring you back more information. We've been having discussions about, we're under the waiver, but we're still under CEP. But when the waiver goes away, does that have an impact on CEP? Yes, but there'll, it'll still be revenue increase versus pre-pandemic. So we'll just have to make sure you understand that. But he's at 1.5 million, 1.6 million to the good so far at this point, at the end of February. Again, your fiduciary funds that we manage, 26.3 million, which is invested. You can see the SPOLOST, 12 million or so around about the end of February. SPOLOST 6, right above your yellow, is what we've got in the bank at the state right now for, for SPOLOST 6 collections. And the only bad news, which is not really bad, but there was a dip in E-SPOLOST collections for the first time in a long time. We just went barely under $1 million, $986,000. And Superintendent, we were talking yesterday, it'll be interesting to see how the gas tax, you know, there's a potential suspension of that that may be signed by the governor. The price of gas without that suspension going up helps us, but the consumption with people staying home and not driving hurts us. So it'll be interesting to see if that's a little bit of a roller coaster for a while. So those are some direct impacts, and you know that that's retail spending that affects that for us. Any questions on that? This is through February now, so you've had back-to-back, back-to-back reports.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board Members, you have your information items, the monthly facilities and maintenance report, and the construction renovation progress summary. And you have any other business to attend to? And you have any other business to attend to? For now, I'll need a motion to go into executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the employment of personnel.
Before we do that, Madam Chair, I would like to provide a women's history spotlight.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you so much. Today's spotlight for Women's History Month goes to Dr. Dorothy Height. On August twenty-eighth, nineteen sixty-three, Dr. Height took a seat on the stage at the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom. She was surrounded by most of the famous civil rights activists. Although she was not scheduled to give remarks, Height had rightfully gained her place among these prominent leaders. Dr. Dorothy Irene Height was born on March twenty-fourth, nineteen twelve, in Richmond, Virginia. Her family later moved to Rankin, Pennsylvania, where she excelled as a student. She eventually received the scholarship to attend college. In nineteen twenty-nine, she was admitted to Barnard College, but was not allowed to attend, being that the school did not admit African-Americans. Instead, Height went on to graduate from New York University, where she received a bachelor's in education, a master's in psychology. And her first job was actually, she became a social worker. Dr. Dorothy Height became encountered with African-American leader Mary McLeod Bethune and began working with the National Council of Negro Women. Dr. Height served as the fourth president of the National Council of Negro Women for nearly forty years. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, our female spotlight for Women's History Month is Dr. Dorothy Height.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from anyone? All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Shepherd?
Unless there's another reason to go into, oh, there is. Can I get you to add too, the reason we're going into executive session is to consult with the attorney on potential litigation?
Yes. Need a motion to go into executive session, one, to discuss or deliberate upon the employment of personnel. Secondly, to consult and meet with legal counsel pertaining to pending or potential litigation.
Good job, Madam Chair.
I think I got it.
You got it. Go, girl.
So motion and second already happened?
Yeah.
All right. Executive session. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate all of you out in the audience, too. Thanks for what you do for us.
I know. I thought I did.
Now, my doctor didn't give us.
Tim. You got what you need?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, I mean, go ahead and give me a moment.
I'm just trying to see if someone.
Yes. Somebody.
It's just.
Morning hours.
And, you know, I'm just.
So anyway, she, she can stay.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good. What is it?
Yeah, a question. Let's do this one twice a month.
I think it's a dozen to get through. I think. He would be up by the end of the day.
Because I thought.
I want a question.
Okay.